Welcome all here in council chambers and all those who are viewing online and through Zoom. Welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Kingman City Council, held on Tuesday, May 3, 2022. Let's turn some time over to our city clerk, Annie Meredith, for roll call.
Mayor Miles.
Here.
Vice Mayor Watkins.
Here.
Councilmember Mello.
Here.
Councilmember Nelson.
Here.
Councilmember Samley.
Here.
Councilmember Scott Staley is excused this evening. Councilmember Walker.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Our invocation tonight will be given by Pastor Griff Bodye of Kingman Presbyterian Church. I would invite all to stand, and then afterwards, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. Sovereign Lord, God, Creator and Sustainer of all peoples, nations and governments, hear our prayer this day. We recognize that those who serve our city of Kingman face great challenges at this time. Wrestling with decisions on numerous issues is never easy. Grant, O Lord, wisdom and discernment to all those who hold public office and who have been invested with the public trust on the municipal level. May every member of the council be mindful of the heritage of those who have gone before them. Grant each one of them the ability to deal with the challenges of today in order to affect a better tomorrow for the citizens of Kingman. And remind all who serve in the public trust that they are not only responsible to the voters, but they are also accountable to you, most holy God, for all of their decisions and actions, both public and personal. Please grant your blessing and your guidance to those involved in tonight's proceedings, for we ask it in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The council may go into executive session for legal counsel in accordance with ARS 38-431 to discuss any agenda item. The following items may be discussed, considered, and decisions made relating thereto. First, on our agenda, we have appointments to various commissions, and starting off with item 1A, appointments to the Economic Development Advisory Commission. The Economic Development Advisory Commission currently has three vacancies and has received applications from Andrew, Andy Bullock, Brittany Gish, Tasha O'Neal, and Morgan Wilson. Two applicants are city residents, O'Neal and Wilson, and two are Mojave County residents, Gish and Bullock. All are registered voters. The commission allows up to two Mojave County residents to sit on the commission, and currently, we have one commissioner living out of the city limits. Staff recommends council appoint up to one county applicant and up to two city applicants to serve one term on the Economic Development Advisory Commission, ending December 23, 2025. Cherish, I think this is your commission?
It is. Thank you. Vice Mayor, I would like to see if Morgan Wilson is here. All right. The reason I asked that was I wanted to hear, this individual has applied to multiple commissions, and I wanted to see what their preference was before making a decision. So if they're not here, then we can't hear from them.
Well, I know we did hear of from Ms. Gish and Ms. O'Neal last time. Would they like to add anything today? Okay. And then there was Andy Bullock, did you say? Is on there also?
Yes, and I believe he's applied for a couple of commissions, too.
Mr. Bullock, would you like to say anything before we take a vote on this commission? Okay.
I would like to know, does he have a preference? He's applied for multiple commissions. I'd like to know if he has a preference over one commission or not another.
Mr. Bullock, we're putting you back on the spot.
Okay, at the time of filling out that application, it says if you're not going to be on this one, would you consider another one? So I put that one down. I didn't know they would show up tonight together. It surprised me when I walked in, didn't it? Anyway, I will serve and would like to volunteer to be where I'm needed. Any place that I can be put to help, I'll be happy with it and do my best.
Thank you.
Do you have a preference?
Not really. Okay. I think working at the airport would be what I would prefer.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Manager Foggan.
There was one thing I wanted to remind council members about, and I'm sorry, I should have got to that page already, but some of the requirements that we need to always consider as far as, Mr. Foggan, do you have that more readily available than I do?
Yeah, so the one thing about the Economic Development Commission that's kind of unique to that commission is that the current rules for the ED Commission is that we, the royal we, the council had established originally that they were looking for people from the seven different sectors of economic development. And what you're referring to is in the packet, and it says, "The city council has identified the following sectors of representation for the Economic Development Advisory Commission: downtown, financial services, manufacturing, marketing, tourism, retail, and workforce development."
Okay. So in reviewing some of these candidates and really looking at their packet and qualification, always keep that in mind, especially for certain of our commissions, that we have those requirements in place. So, okay. Clerk Meredith, are we ready for vote?
Vice Mayor, I have prepared ballot slips so everybody can complete their slip that's in front of them. For Mayor Miles, I would ask that she sends me an email with her selections for any of the commission appointments this evening, and then we will tally them individually.
Okay. And once again, in case, can you clarify for us, those who live in the county, those candidates and those who live in the city, because we can only select one other one? I think two live in the city and two live in the county?
Correct. So the top two live in the county, and the bottom two live in the city.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for that clarification. So as noted, we can only choose one county person and two city people. So if you all could vote, and we will turn those names in.
While you're doing that, Vice Mayor, just make sure you clarify, the tally sheet is just to get you to where you're going to make a motion to actually go to approve?
Correct. Thank you. Thank you for that clarification.
Annie, would you let me know when you've received my email?
I have received it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Miles. Just wanted to recognize you that you are, just wanted to recognize that you are participating via Zoom, and remind everybody about that, and we're glad to have you here in the meeting.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Mayor. I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you for your patience on that. We have six votes for Brittany Gish from Councilmember Nelson, Mayor Miles, Councilmember Walker, Councilmember Samley, Vice Mayor Watkins, and Councilmember Mello. We have six votes for Tasha O'Neal, Councilmember Nelson, Mayor Miles, Councilmember Walker, Councilmember Samley, Vice Mayor Watkins, Councilmember Mello, and four votes for Morgan Wilson, Councilmember Nelson, Mayor Miles, Vice Mayor Watkins, and Councilmember Mello.
Thank you. So it would appear that, and correct me if I'm wrong then, so Ms. O'Neal, Ms. Gish, and Mr. Wilson, Ms. Wilson, I'm sorry. Yes, Councilwoman Samley, would you like to make a motion?
I would like to make the motion that we appoint Ms. Gish, Ms. O'Neal, and Ms. Wilson to the Economic Development Advisory Commission.
May I have a second?
All second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. As far as appointments, 1B, appointments to the Airport and Industrial Park Advisory Commission. The Airport and Industrial Park Advisory Commission currently has four vacancies due to the expiration of terms for Commissioners David Amspoker, Tim Gerlach, and Charles Bill Burrows, and resignation of Commissioner Henry Gutierrez. Both Mr. Amspoker and Mr. Gerlach have expressed interest in being reappointed for a second term. The commission has received an additional application from Andrew Andy Bullock. All applicants are registered voters and live outside the city limits. Commission allows for two members to be county residents. Staff recommends council appointment, appoint up to two persons to serve on the Airport and Industrial Park Advisory Commission for terms ending on December 31, 2024. Councilwoman Mello, I think this is your commission.
It is, and I have worked with Mr. Amspoker and Mr. Gerlach, and they both have done a phenomenal job. And it's tough when there are more interests than we have appointments for, but I highly recommend those two.
Okay, thank you. I guess.
Vice Mayor.
Yes.
I'd like to ask Clerk Annie, it says that we can have two members to be county residents of the existing members left, Mr. Lorimer, Mr. Stutzman, and Mr. Gaines. Who's city and who's county?
The two county spots are open because the ones who terms expired were county residents.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And of course, all three candidates are from the county, correct? Okay. Would Mr. Amspoker like to say anything?
Thank you for the opportunity to address the city council. I've been on the commission for the past three years. We have made a lot of progress and improvements in the airport. We're proud of the accomplishments so far. There are a number of projects that are continuing, and I'd like to stay on the commission so that we can see those through. I'm an active pilot, the Young Eagles Coordinator for the EAA chapter, and last Saturday, we flew 64 kids from the Kingman area. I'm also an angel flight pilot, which means on occasion, I'll fly someone that is in need of medical care in Phoenix from the outlying parts of the state. I think that's a good thing to do, and I hope you'll keep me on the commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Amspoker. Any questions from council for Mr. Amspoker? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Gerlach, is he here tonight? Okay. And Mr. Bullock, which we actually, the past commission also. Okay. I guess it's time to vote. If all of you would write down your selections and then pass it over this way.
Okay, thank you. We have five votes for David Amspoker, Mayor Miles, Councilmember Samley, Councilmember Watkins, or Walker, sorry, Vice Mayor Watkins, Councilmember Mello; three votes for Andy Bullock, Councilmember Samley, Councilmember Walker, Councilmember Nelson; and four votes for Tim Gerlach, Mayor Miles, Vice Mayor Watkins, Councilmember Mello, and Councilmember Nelson.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Mello, can I have, can we have a motion?
Yes, I would like to make a motion that we appoint Mr. Amspoker and Mr. Gerlach to be reappointed to the Airport and Industrial Park Advisory Commission.
Do we have a second?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Councilwoman Walker. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Yes? For clarification, two, only two people from the county can serve on that commission, and so even all, I think all three are county residents, and so we can only fill that, we can only fill two of those positions at this point in time. We need more city residents also, so. But thanks for asking, Mr. Blair. Carl, am I correct?
You're correct.
Okay, thank you. Appointments, item 1C, appointments to the Planning and Zoning Commission. The Planning and Zoning Commission currently has two vacancies and has received applications from Mike Blair, Brandon Laumeister, and Michael Quinn. All applicants are registered voter and live in the city limits. Mr. Blair is currently serving on the Heritage Preservation Commission and would need to resign to serve if selected. Staff recommends council appoint up to two persons to serve on the Planning and Zoning Commission for terms ending on December 31, 2024. And Councilwoman Staley is the council member assigned to this commission. I think, do any of us have questions? Well, actually, let's invite those if they are here, I guess, starting with Mr. Blair. If he has anything he would like to say? Thank you. Your applications is at all. Okay, thank you. Mr. Laumeister, Brandon? Okay, council, council, do we have any questions for Mr. Laumeister? And hopefully, I'm saying your name correctly. Laumeister, okay. And then Mr. Quinn, is he present? Mr. Quinn, thank you.
First of all, thank you for the opportunity. Some of you might not know me. My name is Michael Quinn. I was born and raised in Kingman, Arizona. I owned a local company for about, or local companies for about 20 years, including the indoor batting cage right now. I've seen Kingman obviously grow from dirt streets everywhere to what it is today, and I just want to be part of everything coming in the future. I see big and great things. That's it. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Quinn? Okay, hearing none. Let's vote, please.
Okay, thank you. We have six votes for Mike Blair, from Councilmember Nelson, Councilmember Mello, Vice Mayor Watkins, Councilmember Walker, Mayor Miles, and Councilmember Samley. We have one vote for Brandon Laumeister, from Mayor Miles, and we have four votes for Mike Quinn, Councilmember Nelson, Councilmember Mello, Vice Mayor Watkins, excuse me, Councilmember Walker, and Councilmember Samley.
Thank you. Can we have a motion for Mr. Blair and Mr. Quinn being advanced to this commission?
Vice Mayor, I'll make that motion. I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor. Motion carries.
That was a late.
Yes, that was a late thumbs up. Thank you. Motion carries. Moving on to item 1D, appointment to the Heritage Preservation Commission. There is currently one vacancy to fill on the Heritage Preservation Commission. Two applications have been received. Staff recommends council appoint one person to serve on the Heritage Preservation Commission for a term ending on December 31, 2024.
Excuse me, Vice Mayor, can you turn your mic on, please?
Sorry, thank you.
Would you mind repeating that, just for those that didn't hear it? Thank you.
I will repeat that. Thank you. Item 1D, appointment to the Heritage Preservation Commission. There is currently one vacancy to fill on the Heritage Preservation Commission, and two applications have been received. Staff recommends council appoint up to one person to serve on the Heritage Preservation Commission for a term ending on December 31, 2024. Councilwoman Nelson, I think this is yours?
This particular group does not meet every month like many of them do, but it's a very important commission as far as the city goes, because we have some amazing buildings and some amazing heritage that we do need to focus on and take care of as we grow and expand. So I would like to, I did not see Terry in the audience. Is Morgan Wilson here? Okay, well, then we will just go to the vote.
Okay, and didn't, didn't we appoint Morgan Wilson to another?
Oh, that's right. Did we appoint Morgan Wilson to another?
So.
I believe we did. So Terry is by default?
I think by default.
We probably have to vote. We still have to vote, yeah.
Okay. So if you all could vote and pass those that way, this way?
Vice Mayor, you don't have to do a ballot. You can just call for a motion if you'd like.
I would think that would, yes. Thank you. All those in favor of appointing Terry Henderson to the Heritage Preservation Commission?
Can we get a, wait, wait, we need a motion.
Let's do a motion. I move that we appoint Terry Henderson, Henderson, to the Heritage Preservation Commission.
Thank you, Mayor.
I'll second that.
And we have a second. Mayor, thanks for keeping me intro, out of trouble. All those in favor of appointing Terry Henderson to the Heritage Preservation Commission, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? No. Okay, we're good. Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Yes.
Before you move on, I just wanted to make note of those that were not appointed this evening. Please keep, continue to keep your application active, and please be willing to serve, because we always have availability on commissions. They come up randomly, and so just because you weren't appointed this evening, I want you to please still stay involved. It's very important to the vitality of our city. So thank you for your application.
I think all of us as council members would echo that. Councilwoman Samley, we appreciate that. And once again, want to thank all of those who serve on our commissions. It's an important thing to do. It's volunteer, and we recognize that, and sometimes it's a thankless job, but we appreciate the time that you put into serving on our commissions. Number two on our agenda is call to the public, comments from the public. Those wishing to address the council should fill out request forms in advance. Action taken as a result of public comments will be limited to directing staff to study the matter or rescheduling the matter for consideration and decision at a later time. Comments from the public will be restricted to items not on the agenda, with the exception of those on the consent agenda. There will be no comments allowed that advertise for a particular person or group. Comments should be limited to no longer than three minutes. Clerk Meredith?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. We did not have anybody registered to join us via Zoom tonight, nor were any written comments received in advance. We do have one person of the audience signed up to speak, Mr. Tyler Engel. He has also provided a handout that I have placed at your spot for you as well.
Great, thank you. Mr. Engel.
Hello, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. My name is Tyler Engel. I live 1429 South Copperwind Lane in Kingman, and I'm the president of Engel Homes and some affiliated development companies. Coming before you today because budget season's coming up, everyone's favorite, favorite time, starting next week, and figured I'd get a jumpstart on that and propose something that we're in need of as a company, and I feel like the community and the development community are in need of and want to get budgeted. So I provided that, that little packet there of a few pages. So, I provided that, that little packet there of a few pages. So, the proposal is that the city budget, the Gray Snail Boulevard Sewer Interceptor Line, this, this coming year into the capital improvements budget, and that is a three-and-a-half-mile sewer main, basically. And it goes from the main trunk lines that come from the hilltop across Mojave Wash and west on Gray Snail Parkway. And why it's needed is because, if you look on that map on the second page, that whole area north of town, north of Gray Snail, is not served by any sewer currently. And so, we actually had an application in to do that little blue area, 150 acres. We wanted to start a subdivision there, and the city came back and said, there's not capacity through the other existing lines. And so, the master sewer plan from 2016 says that what's needed to service that whole yellow area is this new main line, that's the green line there, roughly on my little ghetto map I did. But, the problem is, it's a lot of money and a really big line, because the city would prefer it to be done fully sized the first time, so you don't have to keep tearing it out and doing parallel lines and stuff that the cities had to fight with in some older sections of town. So, it's, it's many millions of dollars to do that, and we can't do it just for our little subdivision. It doesn't make economic sense, but it would open up that huge area of land, and it is in the path of development for Kingman. And that's, that's one of the only places we have to stretch out and grow. Maybe we should annex part of that while, while we still have time. So, so that's why it would open up a lot of area. We want to build out there, but there's no sewer availability. How it would be done is it would need to be put on the, the capital improvements budget. We, as a related party or an interested party, would be interested in helping out in some way. My idea was that we could maybe manage and pay for the plans to be done, the designs, per the city, you know, specs and approval, of course. We work with Engineering Department a lot already with things, so just to kind of streamline things, we could, we could help the city out maybe in that way. And then, if the city wants, they could also use the capacity fees that we have in place to refund the city if they were to install it. So, it's, it's kind of a self-funding mechanism. Thanks.
You're out of time, Mr. Engel. Thank you. We will direct staff to take a look at that and, and bring it up in future meeting. Thank you. Item number three is our consent agenda. Are there any items that council members would like to pull and discuss?
Could you just read the intro on that real quick, please?
Yes, I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Cooper. All matters listed here are considered to be routine by the City Council, and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, this item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Okay, back again to my question. Are there any discussion on any of these items? Okay, hearing none. We would entertain a motion for approval of our consent agenda.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item number four, old business. We have none. Number five, new business. New business, item A, Dross Remediation Design Services Contract. The attached agreement is for consideration and approval of a design services agreement for the Dross Site Remediation Project. A request for qualifications for design build services was solicited for the Dross Site Remediation Project. Haley and Aldrich was selected as the most qualified applicant, and the negotiated agreement is attached for council review. The funds for design and remediation are allocated by the Department of Justice and have no fiscal impact for the city of Kingman. Staff recommends approval.
Sorry, I'll just jump in front of Jack here. We put this on the new business, just in case, figured council might want to say something. Normally, we'd just put this on consent. I think this is a great movement and step forward to get this Dross Site Remediation taken care of, and this is the next step, bringing on Haley and Aldrich to, to develop the plan to do it, get the cost estimates, and once they do that, they're going to come back. Once we get those final costs, that's when we're going to be able to go back to the Department of Justice and, and get the money that we need to remediate that site. And it's expected to be a substantial amount of money. We've talked in the past, roughly 30 million, to get this taken care of, so.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Cooper. We will turn some time over to Mr. Plante from our Public Works Department.
I think Mr. Cooper answered all the questions for me already. As he said, you have a design portion, and then, we'll be back at a later time with the construction portion of the contract. So, other than that, I can try and answer any questions, but Carl made it easy tonight.
Well, we didn't want you to feel left out.
I, you know, I appreciate that.
It's important. It's important. Vice Mayor? I would just like, for those citizens that may be watching or may not even know what the Dross Site Remediation is, can you just give us a brief? I know the history goes way, way back, so we don't want to go back to the beginning of time, but can you summarize, like, what this is, where it is, why it's important?
Sure. So, on the south end of the field, there's a big concrete apron down there, and what that area was used for was post-World War II. They were smelting the aluminum as they were disposing of the aircraft. Kingman was a, a World War II training base, and so, as they were smelting the aluminum ingots, what is left over is dross. It's like a slag, and they just pushed that off and they buried it. It's reacting with the soil, and it honestly looked like Mother Earth has acne out there. And so, it causes the asphalt to swell up and, and actually burst open like a giant pimple. It's not great for the, for the airfield, and it's something we want to get remediated and solve in a final form.
Thank you. Very descriptive.
Yes, yes. That's a great summation. Thank you, Jack.
I have a question, just.
Councilwoman Nelson?
Besides making flashbacks to teenage years, thank you. Do we have any, any timeframe? I mean, I know it's government, I know it's federal, I know all those, but.
I'm going to interrupt Jack so he doesn't say a timeframe, because I've made that mistake. And I like to say, I don't plan on making that mistake again, but I, I see the light at the end of the tunnel. I'm not going to do it. Not publicly, how's that?
Oh, come on, Carl, we want a commitment.
I'm hoping sooner rather than later. Yes, we started this in 2012, so it's been a while.
Vice Mayor?
Mayor Miles?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment on that, because Carl, I think that was, discretion was that better part of valid, because 10 years ago, when I first entered council, and we sat in the executive sessions, I can't speak what we discussed, I guess, but at that time, we were very more optimistic that this would move faster. And I'm just really glad to see that we're at this stage, and it is going to move forward. And so, thanks for hanging in, and all of us for being patient. It is going to really happen now, and I'm excited about it, because it is, that is hazardous material, and it needs to totally get taken out and taken away from Kingman, and it will be.
Thank you, Mayor Miles. Okay, any other questions for Mr. Plante or Mr. Cooper?
Yes, Councilman? I would just like to thank Mr. Cooper and his staff for working on this. I think it's before 2012, actually. Well, yeah, we started before 2012, but I think that's when we started the litigation. Thank you for all your hard work in getting us to where we are. Sure. Thank you. Not a problem, I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. We, I guess, do we, we need a motion then for?
Yes, sir.
New business, yeah, for item five A, Dross Remediation Design Services Contract?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. For item number six, department reports, our item number six A, Rancho Santa Fe Project Update, Mr. Foggan?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I don't have a whole bunch of information for you. The project, the project is moving forward and not at the pace that we want it to, which is, we're moving dirt, right? That's really the goal of this whole thing. And I do need to start out with, I guess, I'll start with the bad news first, and then tell you where we are with progress. So, the last time we covered this subject, I had met with the developer, Bill Lindhart. We were in the process of having the FAA accept what's known as an airport layout plan. That airport layout plan had the road, the Rancho Santa Fe Parkway and drainage facility listed on it. It was fought by all that that being accepted by the FAA would be able to move the money forward for the developer. The developers required, as part of this, to provide an irrevocable letter of credit for their portion of the entire project. It's a lot of money, a lot of money. I think they're probably going to be into it just for the infrastructure, $35, $40 million. So, their banks making them dot the i's and cross the t's. With that said, what we end up with is the developers' bank saying that they want to see the road completely accepted by the FAA, which means that we have to get through the environmental assessment for the road and drainage system and for a sewer line before they will issue the irrevocable letter of credit. So, that puts us into the end of August is what that timeframe looks like. We've been doing the EA now for a couple of months. The FAA's process has some very specific advertising and timelines associated with it. I'm happy to report that our team and our consultant have met and surpassed all the deadlines so far with the, with the environmental assessment. So, that's the bad news. The good news is that the developer is still moving forward with the infrastructure design, and they just signed a change order for the, not only for the stormwater detention facility and supporting facilities for stormwater, there's, they're also working on a utility layout for their development. And so, AECom is their engineering firm, and they just changed, did a change order for roughly $630,000 to do that work. So, if there's any question whether they're moving forward, they're committing a whole bunch of money for just the design work. So, that, I think, is absolutely great news. It's not great news for them, though, because the original change order was 500,000. The world we live in, they're going to pay 630,000, which they're going to do, not happy about. But, the other thing that I wanted just to share is that there's a piece of the project that we really haven't talked very much about, but I wanted just to mention that our advanced manufacturing training facility that we've been talking with them about with regards to MCC and the effort to have a facility where they're training anybody, but hopefully our residents, on advanced manufacturing concepts. And we have, Lord knows, we have a whole bunch of jobs available that aren't being filled because of untrained or uneducated folks in, in our region. And so, this facility will be very important for that. They are moving forward with MCC. They're going to dedicate roughly 14 acres for the advanced manufacturing training facility, and they're also going to move their driving course, their, what am I drawing a blank on, their?
Commercial driver's license?
Yes, their CDL program out to this center as well. That is progressing, and they're getting ready to donate that property for MCC. MCC's actually been working on the building design and what that will look like. So, it's pretty good news there. From our standpoint, we stand ready to move forward. Our 2023 budget has our dedicated funds budgeted, and we are ready to go whenever the developer provides their irrevocable letter of credit. We will be able to show the state that we have the money, the developer's showing that they have the money, and just as a reminder, the state has committed $20 million to this project as well. So, that is my report. Happy to take any questions.
Question from council. Mr. Foggan, the money that the state has dedicated towards that is, hopefully, they haven't given us the time limit?
Yeah, there is a time limit.
How soon?
June 30th, 2024.
Okay, so we should come well within that?
Yeah, well within that, yep.
Great, thank you. Okay. Item six B, Kingman Tours, a walkabout with Jim Hinckley, and we have an update on that, and we'd ask, like to ask Ms. Beth Ferry and Mr. Paul Gaines to come forward.
Before, Beth's going to really talk about most of this coming up, but before anything is said, I'd like to point out that it's fascinating to me that I'm here with all this aviation and airport talk, and it's not what I'm here.
We need you to speak.
I'm just saying, I'm happy to be here, even though we're not talking about the airport. It's just amazing that I'm here with all this aviation and airport topic that I'm not what I'm here for. It's fun to see, though, I'm so glad about the progress.
I think it was just a little over a year ago, when we first came and proposed this project and asked for city approval, and that year flew. And if Paul and I, probably, if Kingman Main Street had known what this year was going to entail, we might have been kind of afraid to jump into this project. But, we did, and so, we have a nice, really wonderful update for you. First off, is if any of you have been by the Railroad Depot, you'll see construction going on. And we have sort of unofficially, and I think Kingman Main Street will go forth with that, we're calling that the Depot Plaza, and it is, it'll bring in a lot of different components of this project are part of that plaza. And any case, you know, when we first came, we thought that the cost of our, our project would run around $60,000, and a big part of that was the statue. And because we all have such great tastes, and we, we didn't want to put any kind of junky thing in our community, right, you guys back there, our project costs went up a bit. And so, we're looking at about a total cost of about 127,000. And so, I think, when I talk about, when I hear your guys' costs, I guess ours is kind of measly, you know, but it's big for us. And, and had we known that that was a cost, we would have really been probably afraid. But, we have, along the way, developed some really wonderful partnerships, and that is what is going to bring our downtown to beautiful places, really. It started with, honestly, the Mojave County Tourism, who helped turn us on to a group called Local First Arizona, and they received funds from the federal government, stimulus monies because of COVID, and they were looking for nonprofits to utilize some of these monies. So, we presented our project to them, and they said, yes, this is, you're a perfect group. And then, by that, they shared with us grant, a grant writer, and they paid for that grant writer. So, that was wonderful. So, through that grant writer, we were able to pull in three different grants. Our big one was from the Arizona Office of Tourism Outdoor Recreation, and that grant brought us in 56,500. We about did cartwheels on that one. And then, our own Historic Route 66 Association, which is located right down the street, they, our grant writer helped us to submit a grant to them, and they presented us with $17,000 in grants. And then, Flynn Foundation, which is a cultural organization that shoots to help areas bring in public arts and stuff, gave us a grant for 5,000. So, that gave us a total of about 78,500. And then, our very own community turned around and with benches and bricks and sponsorships for our points of interest, we raised another about 45,000. So, we are there and ready to pay our bills, which is really great. So, just real quickly, last year, we talked about our grand opening was going to be on National Road Trip Day. That is May 27.
Friday, May 27.
So, that is right around the corner, and, and so, we have little invitations for each one of you, because we're going to have our unveiling at 6 o'clock, and there's, we are working in conjunction with Kingman Chamber of Commerce, Mojave Community College, the Kingman Tourism, to put on quite a block party. So, we're super, super excited for multiple reasons. With that, I really want to have some really special thanks. I said that this project, this project has a lot of benefits, I think. One is to bring in tourism into the downtown area, move it from the powerhouse and have people walking down and visiting our shops and our restaurants as they learn about historic Kingman. But it also has been a really wonderful way to build partnerships with various organizations. Not one of us could have done this by ourselves. We are very grateful to our City of Kingman Tourism Department. Josh and Katie have been on site. Their wonderful economic development, Gary Kellogg was the one who showed us the sites and said, what do you think about this? And that was so helpful. Public Works, oh my God, if, if, I dare to say, if we did not have Public Works working with us, I do not know what that would look like. You know, it'd be like, how many people can come out here today? I think we're going to try to push some dirt. Hey, can we get some volunteers to lay some bricks? Can we? And we would try to make it look really nice, we really would. But these guys are just the best and they have been working with us. And we would say, you guys, we have, you know, middle of April, you guys, do you think, don't worry. We think we can really get this done. We think we can really get this done. And look at it, it's just wonderful.
Yeah, you guys have to go out there as soon as you can and just look at the construction going on. The stucco was done today, I believe, so it's looking really pretty. And the bricks is the next big addition that's going to go in and it's looking really, really nice. That's just for the plaza and the sculpture part where the brick donations are. But it's just like the kickoff area for the tours downtown.
Kingman Chamber of Commerce has been wonderful, working with us side by side in Mojave Community College. We love the fact that they're right downtown and accessible. And so we feel like this is just the beginning of some of the things we can do for our downtown. But our program on Friday, streets are going to be closed. We have the old cars, what do we call this? I'm sorry.
Classic cars.
Classic cars. Classic cars, they're going to be downtown and parked until about 7:00, I think. Our unveiling will start at the statue. We have, we'll have a walk through with the points of interest down 4th Street with people being able to get stamped. We've got volunteers at each site and they'll get stamped at. We've got about 12 designated stops initially to start this off with. And it'll go right down 4th Street and down there. And then bands at the parking lot next door to Hotel Beal and that'll go to about 10:00. So we are, we'll do the National Road Trip proclamation and then move on over to the unveiling and then we'll listen to some music and be grateful that we have such a wonderful community.
And that it's over.
I didn't say.
No, we're very glad to help and do all this stuff, but it's not easy.
Anyway, if you have any questions, we, what's really great about the plaza is we are combining the Route 66, Get Your Brick on Route 66. Well, some of those bricks have been covered up by some things, some have been removed. So we're taking all those names, those bricks will go down to the walkway to the thing. So that'll be to the statue. So that's going to be a really special place to put those bricks that people previously bought. And then we've got the new bricks on the outside of that. And we've got a really, it'll be a really beautiful plaque that explains the project next to the statue. And then it's right there in front of our depot, so that's going to be wonderful. So anyway, any questions or anything?
Well, first, thanks for that report and it's going to be, it sounds like it's going to be a great thing for Kingman, especially for our downtown area and bringing, you know, another opportunity for tourists. I wanted to ask, are there more, still bricks for sale?
Oh, yes, but they may not be, well, they may or may not be completed by then, the laser. But we have, we have additional, like for example, points of interest. We will already, day after the opening, we are going into phase two where we're starting up on some points of interest that people have purchased that were not on the original list. So those will be getting ready to be installed and then our bricks, those will always be for sale.
Great, you can go to kingman.tours and then order a brick there. Other sponsorships are available there, but there's an area there where you can, it's called the bronze, I think, level for a brick. And you can, so just go to kingman.tours, you can order one.
Yeah.
I think it's important that our public know this because I'm sure there are still a lot of people that would like to be involved and nothing else, just helping our community.
Oh, and I think once it's down there, people will really see what it looks like. So we'll be always selling bricks. I think that'll be, in fact, I think the bricks will be a big way to continue to keep our program upgraded. This is going to require constant maintenance, honestly, you know? As far as the computerized or the digital type, all that stuff.
Yeah, the QR code.
Sorry.
Sorry, I was kind of pushing you out of the way.
Vice Mayor.
I'm done talking.
I was going to say that we have about, there's about 3,500 bricks, blank bricks that are there. We have several hundred that are sold. We've got a lot of room to add on. And I think when people go by there and they see some of them are taken, they're going to want to know. And we're going to have information right there in a nice classy way that they can order a brick and then have it installed later that season.
Great, Mayor Miles.
You know, I just want to add a big thank you to Beth and Paul for spearheading this. And I know it took a lot of people coming together to make this happen, but your enthusiasm and vision has been just keeping it on track and so appreciated. It's going to add so much to the city. It's going to ensure the history of so much of the city is institutionalized and not lost. And I hope that you're going to be able to get Jim Hinckley there. And I know he's rather, you know, shy about some of this, but he's iconic now. And this will bring his, he has an international following. And I know that there are going to be so many people that are happy that he is at heart of this project. So just a big thank you on behalf of everyone in the city and also to all the players. And you've mentioned many times about how many hours staff have worked with you. So I just really love to see a project like this come together. But it takes someone with your kind of energy and vision, so thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor. And yes, Jim will be there, probably signing autographs. I don't know what he's going to be doing.
But the artists will be there?
Also, yes.
Also, so that'll be really great, you know? They feel like they are part of our community as well. So, you know, it's just been a really wonderful piece. So we're just waiting for bricks to arrive, benches to arrive, they're all, you know.
And the sculpture, the bronze, the bronze casting, yeah. It's all coming together rapidly now near the end, so.
Great, thank you. Any comments from or questions from council members?
Vice Mayor, I have one. So yours is at 6, but across the street is the actual dedication for the National Travel Day, correct?
Right, we'll start at the parking lot and that's where we'll have a stage set up there and we'll do the proclamation there and then we'll go across the street at 6, right? And we'll have chairs in the road.
Excellent, just wanted to make sure everybody knew that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Councilwoman Samuel.
I just wanted to say thank you. I think this is going to be very great for Kingman, so appreciate it.
Hey.
I'm sorry, 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 sorry.
We're getting a little punchy to each other now.
I'm sorry.
You've been working together way too long. I just want to say thank you. I really do appreciate the effort. I'm sure it was a huge, huge project, but it's going to give many rewards to our community for years to come, so I thank you.
Thanks. I, you know what, I already, you know, like we went to some businesses and we said, your business is on our historic walking tour, we've got a plaque, we, you know, we want to know if we can put it on the building or blah, 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 blah. And the first thing they say is, is well, how much is that going to cost? And we said, no, it's free. You know, we have sponsors for this and we just want people to be able to come down here and learn about the building and move people. Oh, my God, that's such a great idea. And I think, oh my, that just makes my heart, you know, so happy, you know, about how excited the business owners are about something like that. And even this event, you know, we said, you know, we don't want vendors to come down to this. We want our downtown restaurants to be a part of, this is our downtown group, you know? So offer a special thing for meals, you know? Do historic tours, you know?
And be open late.
Yeah.
That kind of thing.
Exactly, have shops be open late, you know? This is for the downtown and we're just super excited. And who knows what other idea Paul will come up with?
No. This is her fault.
Well, once again, Beth, Paul, thanks for your excitement. As a mayor, I echo what she said and this is all exciting news and welcome, and thanks again for the invitation.
Hey, you're welcome. We'll see you in three weeks.
Yes, we will see you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is item number seven, announcements by mayor, council members and city manager. Mr. Foggan.
I do not have any announcements, I was not handed any, so thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Walker. Councilwoman Samuel.
Well, I just wanted to say that I attended the ALO. I know several of us were at ALO Fiber where they did their Welcome to Kingman Tour. I think they're going to be in Havasu. They're making quite a huge investment in our community and I just wanted to publicly thank them for taking Kingman to some of the fastest internet in the state of Arizona, in the country. So they are very vested in our community and for years to come. So I was very pleasantly surprised to see all of the ALO people there, learning that they're hiring some of our local folks for job positions and just knowing that we are going to be very fast and futuristic. So thank you, ALO Fiber.
Thank you, Councilwoman Samuel. Councilwoman Mello.
I also went to ALO groundbreaking today and attended the Tri-City Council meeting. You were there, Vice Mayor?
Thank you.
And then we also attended the Arbor Day Celebration and that was fun. Was it, were they 5th graders?
This last Saturday.
Mm-hmm, this last Saturday.
Seemed like most of them.
And they had a competition for their poster, the 5th graders. So that was fun to participate in that and we planted some trees. And that's about it for me.
Thank you, Councilwoman Nelson. I would add to the ALO groundbreaking that was this morning. And what's significant about it is that they are bringing high-speed internet and a lot of companies are looking, will look at Kingman and they require having this high-speed internet and, you know, access to the world, basically. And this will actually put us on the map and make that more, make us more attractive to these companies that might want to relocate to Kingman. So that's a great event. We also attended the, my wife and I and Councilwoman Mello attended the Fun Run this last weekend. That was an amazing event. The streets were closed off. Thanks again to our Public Works, Jack and all those who volunteered. I know you were part of it probably, none at all? This is true and yes, to Josh and all those involved with that. It was a great success. A lot of tourism dollars were brought to the city this last weekend, so we appreciate that. I have nothing else. Mayor Miles.
Really nothing. I just wanted to add about ALO though, that a big thank you to the county. And because I think most of us know that Supervisor Ling and Felter added some seed money that really helped attract ALO to our city and so we appreciate that. And it really is going to make a difference on the industrial part, as you noted, Vice Mayor, because, and that has long been needed to have that kind of speed available to attract the businesses that we want to have out there. So that's all I wanted to add right now, thanks.
Thank you, Mayor. Moving on to item number eight, council request for future reports and updates. Any comments from council? Okay, hearing none. Do we have a motion for adjournment? We are adjourned, thank you. And thanks again for everybody being here tonight.